Karen, who will be taking questions while the forums?
Yes, right.
I'm going to borrow your microphone.
Alright.
Okay, this is to decide if we go first or last question.
Just to switch it and then we switch it off.
Good evening. We'll get started here. My name is Jan Madison, I'm the PTA President at Lewis and Clark. It's become kind of of a tradition at Lewis and Clark that we hold the annual School Board Candidate Forum. So here we are this year. I'd like to welcome you all here tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters, the Missoula PTA Council, and the Lewis and Clark School Community. We'd like to welcome also our MCAT viewing audience. I'd like to give special thanks to Sarah Bucy and Dolores Cedarburg from the League of Women Voters, and Lori Newell Bowman from the Missoula PTA Council for their assistance in setting up this candidate forum. Our moderator this evening is Mr. Bob Turazis. Mr. Turazis's role is to keep our forum running in a fair and efficient manner this evening. It is his job to implement the guidelines and ground rules for the forum. We have developed some guidelines for this evening's forum that have been shared with the candidates and the public beforehand. I would like to take just a minute to go over those guidelines and ground rules for tonight's forum. The purpose of this forum is to hear from the candidates and to hear what their views are on the important issues concerning Missoula County Public Schools and the education of our children. We ask that you, members of the audience, write your questions so that we can ask questions on as many important topics as possible during the limited time of this forum. The actual questions to be asked of the candidates are being sorted by four PTA members: Kelly Hansen from Roosevelt, Jill Palmer from Lewis and Clark, Michelle Reardon from Dickinson, and Jane Demorris from Cold Springs. No further questions will be taken from the audience. The forum will begin with each candidate having one minute to introduce herself and tell us a little bit about herself. Following this, Mr. Turazis, as moderator, will read each question to the candidates. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. Tannis Lidle in the front row will be timing the candidates' responses and will hold up cards for them so they know how much time they have left. The order of answering questions will rotate through the candidates so that everyone has an equal chance to be first and last. The final round will be one and a half minutes for each candidate to sum up her thoughts and ideas, and if we're running on time, that'll start at about 8:20. Since our goal for this evening is to hear as much as possible from each candidate, we ask that you hold your applause for all candidates until the end of the forum. We appreciate the participation of each candidate in sharing her thoughts and ideas with us, and your participation as thoughtful, reflective listeners. Thanks.
We'll just go ahead and start with Jenda, taking a minute to introduce herself, Rosemary Deborah.
Hello, I'm Jenda Cummings. I'm a current school board member seeking reelection. I want to tell you that I'm the mother of two children. I have a daughter in high school and a son in first grade, both in Missoula Public Schools. We live in the west side of the Rattlesnake, which means our children ride the bus to school. My daughter went to Mount Jumbo in Prescott riding the bus, and we found that the school, parents and staff work together very hard to create a broader sense of community since our neighborhood school is in east Missoula. For my first graders' needs, they dictated that we look beyond our neighborhood school to best meet his needs, and he is in a multi-age classroom at Lewis and Clark. And we feel very much a part of that school community also.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Harrison, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and Lewis and Clark PTA for sponsoring this forum tonight. I'd briefly like to let you know about myself. I'm a native of Missoula. I'm married and have two kids, a son who's in eighth grade and a daughter who's in sixth grade, and they're both at Washington Middle School. I have worked for over 15 years in public schools, both in administrative positions and currently as a speech pathologist at Hellgate Elementary. I've also owned my own business for 13 years, British Speech and Hearing Center here in Missoula. I'm the past president of the Montana Speech and Hearing Association and have had extensive lobbying experience at the legislative level. I've served on the board for the past three years, and I served as the Chair of the Curriculum Committee and Personnel and Negotiations Committee. And I also served as the board representative to the negotiating committee when the last teacher contract was negotiated.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Sears, and my husband Jim and our children Robert and Steven, Catherine, Leela, Adam and Ellen go to schools, preschool, and have been in Paxton, now in Roosevelt, Washington, and Hellgate. And we've both, my husband and I, have been very active volunteers in the schools at all levels. Our children participate in fine arts programs throughout the district, and we enjoy these beautiful arts programs. And active athletes that we have there in these programs as well. I, as a future board member, if that happens, feel very strongly that neighborhood schools are the place to introduce fine arts programs and athletic programs, keep our families in our neighborhood schools. Thank you.
My name is Gigi Wykes. I'm going to read from my questionnaire answers that didn't make it into the league's questionnaire because I answered them after work on March 9th. I've lived in the district for six years. I'm the mother of a one-year-old who just learned to walk, and I don't know which school he'll be attending. I haven't found out yet. It'll either be Cold Springs or Russell, but I do feel strongly that I am one of the affected neighbors, in one of the affected neighborhoods, as the Missoulian identified me, because we are all affected by these decisions. I work at the university as a teacher of anthropology and an administrator. I've taught for 15 years, and I have experience on the executive board of the Teachers Union and two bargaining teams, extensive hours in meetings and contract negotiations. And I've also worked with grants and budgets at the university, and I hope that that experience will prove useful to me as a future board member.
Okay, thank you very much for those introductions. The first question, we will start with Rosemary Harrison, and that question is, "What is your main goal in running for School Board Trustee?"
Well, my main goal in running for School Board Trustee is to continue the work that we have begun. I believe that there's a very steep learning curve when you become a member of the board. When I first got on the board, I was amazed to find out all the different aspects of being a board member. And I have desired to continue being on the board, to continue to pursue the different areas that I have pursued on the board. I've had the opportunity to learn a variety of things, school to work, negotiations, different things about personnel, and I would like to continue with that vision and continue working as a cohesive member of the board.
Thank you. Next, Deborah Sears. What is your main goal in running for School Board Trustee?
My main goal in running for School Board Trustee would be to keep our neighborhood schools enlivened, our programs enlivened, would be to keep our neighborhood schools enlivened, our programs enlivened, and our children close to family. I believe that there is money in this budget. I am convinced that there is money within this school administration's budget to make that so. I would like also to make sure that the administration offers the school board a monthly accounting as to where money is going. And I hope, I hope in the future we see more heart in the decisions that we make about community. Our community of Missoula has a long-range plan, and this school district needs to work with that plan. And I believe that that can happen. I'm certain that that can happen. Thank you.
Okay, Gigi Wykes, same question.
I would like to contribute more creative problem-solving to the process of the board, particularly to take advantage of all the creativity in the community and encourage and enliven participation. We've all been attending a lot of meetings in the last two years, and I've intended meetings since January of ninety-eight, and I've been astounded at the incredible talent and energy of this community and interest in participating in the process and helping the board with their decisions. And I would like to work for more win-win solutions rather than choosing between two alternatives that no one finds very appetizing. And so that's my philosophy of problem-solving, that I'd like to contribute. And my main goal would be to restore a sense of leadership and trust and dialogue in which everyone feels that they're looking for creative alternatives that can work, rather than feeling pressed and constrained by the choices presented to them.
Okay, thank you. Next, Jenda Cummings. Do you want me to repeat the question?
No.
Okay.
The reason I'm running for reelection on the school board is to preserve the quality of education in Missoula. Over the last three years, I've had a chance to examine the budget in some depth, and I am convinced that there is not enough money to do everything, that we do have to make difficult choices. And my priority for all our children is the quality of education they receive. I think this is the foundation upon which we have to build all our hopes and dreams for the district. Everything that we hope to do to move forward and be even better depends upon the quality of instruction, equity of educational opportunity, and stability for long-range planning in the budget.
Thank you. The next question, we're going to rotate these now. The first person to answer it will be Deborah Sears. Do you believe in sticking to the platform you would be voted in on, or do you reserve the right to change your mind?
Well, we all have a choice. I do feel firmly in the belief that I have already stated, and that is that families need to be close to primary schools, and I feel that that would be one of my main goals here. I know that we can maintain small class sizes. We have the federal money that will help us do that. I hope that we can do that throughout the district. I do not like seeing my high school student in a class of thirty in an honors English class. I do not like seeing my ninth-grade fourteen-year-old in a class of twenty-nine in an advanced math. I think it's very difficult for the teachers to manage as well as they do, and they continue to manage beautifully. I would like to help these teachers. And I continue and will continue to support small neighborhood schools and family in the schools and fine programming. Thank you.
Do you want me to repeat the question?
No.
Okay, Gigi.
I would agree with that position, and that's why Deborah Sears and I have been running for the last three weeks. And the first thing I did when I filed my petitions was go find the bylaws and read them carefully. We have an ethical obligation as trustees to keep an open mind and to consider all information. And that is something that you do the entire three years as a trustee. I've served on boards and committees, and I know that obligation well. But I also think that for the three-year period that people are elected, they need to communicate to the voters ahead of time what they plan to do in those three years. And that's what a platform is, is to outline broadly the principles that we support as candidates and to say that we're committed to working for those principles. And I'm running on a platform that I think we can keep all our neighborhood schools open, and we can be committed to those schools for three years at least. There's money in the budget. I've been studying it, and I would be glad to discuss that with, more with people one-on-one. But that is my platform, and that's what I'm going to work for.
Okay, thank you. Jenda, would you like me to repeat the question? Okay.
I think we elect people on the promise that they will make the best decisions that they possibly can using all the information they have available. I think you want people to be open-minded and to continue to be able to learn and to grow. Budget information and resources available in our district changes from year to year. Look, this year, for example, with the additional money, three point five from the legislature, about another hundred and forty-three thousand total with special education. We also have declining enrollment. Last year, we were a little surprised that we had a hundred and twenty less students. I think that you need someone that can learn from the process and be flexible.
Okay. Rosemary Harrison.
I agree that the school board is a very complex board. I believe that when you run, there are many things that arise as you become a board member that you are unaware of. I think that it's important to keep an open mind, to be able to learn and be able to look at all the different options. I believe that it's a good thing to be able to not have a specific program that you are trying to carry out, but rather to be able to listen to all sides, all different options, and to consider all possibilities.
Okay, thank you. Got to get organized here. Okay. This one, I know I'm going to have to repeat a couple of times. And we'll start with Gigi Wykes, please. Can you list in order of priority for you and tell us why the following things? Programs, school closure, low class size, transportation safety. Would you like me to repeat that? Let me do it. Can you list programs, school closure, low class size, transportation safety, in order of priority for you, and tell us why? And we'll start with Gigi, please.
Programs are obviously first, and I would add that programs are in schools. And our current situation of the neighborhood schools that we have is a good one, and I would like to preserve it. The programs are the schools, the schools are the programs, and how they deliver them matters in where they're located and how big they are and how big the class sizes are in those buildings. The school closure decision, I would like to rescind as early as possible. I do not think it was a good decision. I think it was made before we knew all the money that was available to us. Now we do know our budget, and I think that decision could easily be decided to keep neighborhood schools open with the monies available we have today. The low-class size issue is a problem that needs to be addressed, and I think that school closure has been far more radical drastic solution than was necessary. I think school class size should be addressed, and I would say that transportation issues, transportation issues are only necessary if you close schools.
Okay, thank you. Jenda, would you like me to repeat it? Okay.
Programs would be my top priority because curriculum is the heart and soul of our district. It's about, it's the reason why we're here. Coupling that, you have to have reasonable class sizes to deliver your curriculum appropriately. Teachers have to be able to have flexibility to meet the individual needs of students across a broad range of abilities and talents. And that would be my second priority. Neighborhood schools would be my third priority. I think they're vitally important to neighborhoods. But they're not, what we're charged with on the school board is providing quality education for children. That has to be our first priority. And safety for children, of course, is important, but that would be my fourth priority.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary Harrison.
I would agree that program would have to be your first priority. Curriculum is what a school district is all about, and quality of education is what we are all concerned about on a school board. We have also discussed at great length that we're concerned about decreasing class size throughout the district. And throughout the district, I believe, is a big issue here. I believe that equity throughout the district is a big concern, and it has been a concern of the board to make sure that all schools are able to enjoy small class sizes. School closure would become the third. And I would agree, neighborhood schools is what I was raised with in Missoula, and under the optimum conditions, of course, you would support neighborhood schools. And there's no question that transportation safety falls right in there with school closure. I mean, that's always an issue for a board member.
Thank you very much. Deborah Sears.
I'm listening here to transportation safety, and I'm not going to put that on the top of my list, but I'm very aware that a bona fide engineering traffic safety study has not been done for the children that will soon be crossing Reserve Street or for the traffic that's going to occur on Higgins around Pax and School. And I am concerned for the physical safety of our little children's bodies right now. I will say that programs are extremely important to me, and the program, as Gigi has said, is the school. I would say that I have met many teachers who can manage quite well with thirty students, but it is certainly not optimal. I'd like to see that, and it's a national cry right now. We need smaller class sizes, and we certainly want them in neighborhood schools. And I certainly hope that we can pull that off. Thank you.
Okay. Jenda Cummings. What would you do to encourage more discussion between board members at work sessions in board meetings? Do you want me to repeat that for you?
We recently changed the structure of how the school board does its business. We used to have five committee meetings, the one monthly school board meeting in addition to the several committees that met during the day. Now, I'll agree that it was easier to talk about difficult issues when there was just a small number of people. But we chose to make the change to go to evening work sessions so that we could include the public. It's very important that you participate in this process. We need to hear from you because we are your representatives. Sometimes it is difficult to talk about controversial issues in a room packed with people, but we just have to get better at that because it's important that we be accessible to you and that we have our meetings in the evenings so that you can participate.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary Harrison, do you need me to repeat it?
No, I think I've got it.
Okay.
I agree with what Jenda said. It definitely was a calculated decision of the board to go to evening work sessions, and the whole purpose of that was to make it available for the public who works and so forth, to be available for evening meetings and to hear the board discuss all of these different options. It is difficult at times for us to have a real open communication because I think everybody feels uncomfortable about having everyone listen to everything they're going to say. But I think that the more that we do it, the better we get at it, and certainly, public input is a very important part of being a board member.
Thank you very much. Deborah Sears.
Are we only speaking about having board meetings in the evening here?
Well, what you're supposed to speak to or answer the question, "What would you do to encourage more discussion between board members at work sessions and board meetings?"
I think perhaps it has been set up in the pattern between administration and board, and I may be wrong here, but that we simply are supposed to follow rules instead of have full discussion. This is my sense when I'm at work sessions or in the audience at a board meeting. And I do believe that people need to have some free discussion in a board meeting in order to come to a real heartfelt decision. At this time, I do not feel that the setup with board members and administration is very effective. How that's going to be addressed, I think the board members need to get together and hammer out. We need to be able to talk. And I believe we will come to more reasonable and qualified and educated decisions if we can talk.
Thank you very much, Gigi Wykes.
You know, to say that meetings are available to the public is one thing, and to say that they're welcoming of the public is another. And I think one of the difficulties with the board discussions I've seen is that they do feel constrained, as some of the current board members have said, that because you feel you're out in front of everyone speaking. And I know, I speak in front of hundreds of students a day, and it is always a pressure to be out in front of a public watching you. But I do think that the board members are not discussing freely enough among themselves during the meetings, and I think that Robert's Rules of Order has become slightly oppressive to the members of the board. It's supposed to facilitate a process. It's not supposed to make people feel oppressed in when they can and cannot speak or how long they can speak or how respectful their conversations will be of each other. The rules are meant to facilitate that, that mutual respect and open discussion. So I would like to see maybe some facilitation and training on how to run a meeting so the rules don't rule you.
Okay, thank you very much. Rosemary Harrison. Contract negotiations will begin the next school year as the three-year contracts are up the summer of two thousand. The proposed budget from Dusso and Seekins calls for administrative salary freezes. Do you advocate equal treatment for all employee groups? If not, why do you believe only administrative salaries should be frozen and/or reduced?
Would you repeat that again?
You bet. Contract negotiations will begin the next school year as the three-year contracts are up the summer of two thousand. The proposed budget from Dusso and Seekins calls for administrative salary freezes. Do you advocate equal treatment for all employee groups? If not, why do you believe only administrative salaries should be frozen and/or reduced?
Well, I definitely am not in favor of administrative salary freezes in just pulling them out as a group to freeze their salaries. I believe that all employees of the district are very important. I believe that all employees of the district need to be valued and need to be reimbursed according to their abilities, their training, what they do for the district. I think that, of course, when we negotiate, we negotiate with each group individually, and the administrators do not have a negotiating group. But I think that the board has certainly been considering how to make sure that everyone gets equitable pay, and I am not in support of an administrative salary freeze.
Thank you. Deborah Sears.
Thank you. It's a very intriguing question. All of us are wondering about administration and teachers and salaries and budgets. And I personally would like to know more about the percentage increases we've seen for teachers as they relate to the percentage increases we see in salaries for administrators. Perhaps if teachers were paid commensurate with administrators, I would feel more comfortable because they're the people who contact our children daily for hours. They're the people I trust with my children. I know that administration is important. I think that it can possibly be more efficient. I would like to pay for administrative efficiency and see that efficiency behoove our children with more wonderfully paid teachers. Thank you.
Gigi Wykes.
As I've understood the alternate budget, and I've been studying it pretty carefully whenever I can this week, the freeze in administrative salaries proposed is only for the first year, and the second and third years of this proposed budget, and it is a proposal, are for modest increases. So I think in that context, I would support the alternate budget for its proposal for a freeze for administrative salaries in the first year. The second thing I'll say is that relative to administrative salaries, teachers' increases in the in the past, as I understand it, have been relatively less than the increases that the administrators have received as a percentage. And if that's true, and that could be verified, I think I would be, again, more comfortable with my first decision because I do think that teacher salaries increases could deserve our first priority. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much. Jenda Cummings.
Yes, this past year, and we'll be going into the third year of the three-year contract, all employee groups receive the same percentage increase, 3.21%. Administrators receive that. Classified and certified personnel all receive 3.21%. Last summer, the board unanimously approved an administrative salary matrix. That vote was unanimous. It addressed some administrative salaries that were, had a great variation that was in part along gender lines. And the board decided that we needed to make sure that we provided equal pay for equal work for all our employees. I would support funding the second year of the administrative matrix, which is a total of $20,000 for the K-8 district for next year. The balance of the $70,000 in administrative raises is just that raises. What -- I'm sorry, I'm out of time.
Okay, we'll start this time with Deborah Sears. Do you feel that all members of the school board have an obligation to study actual expenditures rather than only projected costs?
Yes. Yes. Unqualified, yes. I think we're responsible for the detail. If I become a board member, I'm not really a number-crunching budget person as it goes most of the time, but I certainly can understand my checkbook, and I know whenever money goes out, and I want to know what money goes out for. And I think if we do this monthly, that people that are not necessarily comfortable with budgets can become comfortable with budgets. I would really like to see the administration make available to the board monthly a detail on what has gone out and what it's going out for. Thank you.
Okay. Gigi Wykes.
Yes. By law, the administration must present at the end of every budget, as I understand it, budget year, the monies that have not been expended in the proposed budget for that year, and then the board must decide how that money will be spent. And I have become very familiar with budgets in the last month for the K through 12 system, more so than I was before I declared my candidacy, but I'm finding it a really enjoyable process because I'm learning a lot, and I'm learning from people in the community, I'm learning from board members, and I think that we can make budgets more comprehensible to everyone involved. Now, I understand that one of the reasons that the board made their decision not to have reported expenditures is that, as they put it, they didn't want to talk about $137 repair bills, but I still think that every board member should know the actual expenditures.
Okay. Jenda Cummings.
Board members receive a monthly accounting in their packet of all expenditures for major categories in the budget. Purchase orders are available for any board member that would like to look at them in the business office any day of the year. I think there's a danger here in trying to look too closely at individual line items in a $22 million budget. I think we see this with this alternative budget proposal. In one area, just when you look at line item 112, which is teachers, according to the Seekins-Dusso alternative budget, there's 308,000 left in last year's line item. That doesn't take into account how money is moved within functions because in line item 117 for para-eds, it's $444,000 in the red, and that 308,000 was used to cover part of the deficit. Budget managers need to have a lot of flexibility, and I see I'm out of time.
Okay. Rosemary Harrison.
I believe that every board member is responsible to understand the budget. I do not believe that every board member is responsible to understand every penny that goes through the budget, and I do not believe that that's even possible. The budget is overwhelming, and I believe that there are -- this is a basic philosophical difference. I believe that the board is basically a policy-setting group, and we hire administration to give us overall pictures of budgets and to help us to understand different items that are in the budget, and this certainly is an area of disagreement. But I have confidence in the things that I'm showed through the budget by the administration, and I believe that that has helped me in my policy setting.
We'll start with Gigi Wykes. Why is it that historically and today, the schools closed or recommended for closure have been and are in the areas of Missoula in which income average is typically the lowest?
Could you repeat the question, please?
You bet. Why is it that historically and today, the schools closed or recommended for closure have been and are in the areas of Missoula in which income average is typically the lowest?
I don't know the reason to that question. That's one of my questions for the policies that this board has set. And I'll bring my one graphic picture for the meeting today. This is a map of the closure patterns of Missoula, and this is what our closure district looks like if the current proposal that the board voted on goes through, and that is the center of the district. And I see this as a pattern. Excuse me, I'll hold it up as the audience is asking me to. I think that's one of the reasons I'm so, feel so strongly that this was a bad decision because these are the children that can least afford this kind of dislocation, as well as the teaching talent in these schools that has worked so effectively with Title I and other programs to keep these children learning at their maximum, you know, potential in their neighborhoods where they walk to school every day. And I think these are the children least able to take this change.
Thank you. Jenda Cummings.
The reason that Roosevelt and Emma Dickinson schools were chosen for closure is because they have the smallest enrollment, because they have, they're in the neighborhoods with the fewest children. There are other schools with even greater numbers of children on free and reduced lunches. Those schools were not closed. We did not close Lowell, which has 75% of its population, free and reduced lunch, or Franklin with 74%. This is not a plot by the board to target any socioeconomic neighborhood in Missoula.
Thank you. Rosemary Harrison.
I think that in reality, you do see an awful lot of families moving out of the areas that have been targeted for school closure. I think that one of the things that is always brought up is that we are moving against the growth management plan of the city council and the county commissioners. I think that in some ways that the change of the family definition plan by the city council has caused a lot of these lower income, or the cheaper housing to go to rental property and has caused people to turn those things over into university housing as opposed to homes for children and families, and that is another reason that we're seeing our population move away from these central areas.
Okay, thank you. Deborah Sears.
Yeah, this is a hot topic, and we are seeing Title I schools closing. We are seeing a school closing that was hardly given time to even think about closing, and that's Emma Dickinson. And that's not just Title I, that's 30% bilingual. That's a school that has a Russian community and a Mong community in it that have been given asylum in this country, and we've just destroyed their base. I can't see it. I really can't. I would like to say that I think we should work very diligently to give voice to people who often feel they do not have a voice, and that would be our communities where people are considered low-income. This does really, this is a topic for me that hurts, and I would like also to see the area around Roosevelt recognized as being enlivened. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if we can start with Jenda Cummings, please, with this question. What is your vision? Oh, excuse me, I had a misspelled word here, and I had to try and figure it out. What is your vision for the Missoula Public Schools five years from now?
Well, an ideal vision would include neighborhood schools. An ideal vision would mean that the target projections for growth are true and that we have more growth and we have more children and we can reopen schools. I doubt that that is what would occur. So that my tempered vision for ideal education in Missoula would be classrooms where students can receive individual attention from well-trained, well-qualified, and well-supported teachers, where the needs of at-risk students are addressed with early intervention, where tolerance is a way of life for all children K-12, and we have long-term stability in our budget.
Thank you. Rosemary Harrison.
I would like to see the district moving in a focused, strategic direction with a very clear vision of long-term goals of where we want exactly to see our students. I'd like to see equitable class sizes across the district. I'd like to see continued strengthening of academic standards for all students. I'd like to see a strong program of teacher development, and I would like to see safe schools implemented across the district in all settings, as well as school-to-work kinds of things throughout the district, especially at the high school level.
Thank you. Deborah Sears.
Would you please repeat the question?
Yes. What is your vision for the Missoula Public Schools five years from now?
I would enjoy seeing lively neighborhoods with children playing at all neighborhood schools, excellent fine arts programs, and very wonderful athletic programs and health programs, programs in the school that teachers feel satisfied with and children come away from healthy and full of energy. I definitely want to see safe streets for our children. There's a lot of hope here. In five years, I'd like to see a plan that encompasses the next five years. I want to see a plan put together by this administration that goes for more than one year, a plan that has many different cogs and works with our village, our community, and its citizens. Thank you.
Gigi Wykes.
I'd like to see more money in this budget. I want a political solution to the funding cap, and I want to see citizens over in Helena making that work in the next five years. The high schools and the middle schools, we haven't talked about very much because the elementary district has been so crucial an issue to this race, but we are going to see increasing class size problems in those levels. Now, all these fifth grades, 14 fifth grades, are the ones that are oversized right now, and they're all going up to sixth grade next year. So we're going to have to look at class size in the middle schools and the high schools and address that problem there. But most of all, I'd like to build with our strengths. If we walk to school that's free, I'd like to keep that kind of low-cost way of getting to school.
Okay, we'll start, we started with Jenda last time, so I guess we start with Rosemary this time. There have been at least five public hearings to address the issue of school closure in Missoula. The Alternative Council of 1998 came forth with many suggested solutions as alternatives to closing neighborhood schools. Which of these proposed solutions do you favor?
The alter -- ask me that again. You're asking for the alternative to school closure?
That's just what the question says. There have been at least five public hearings to address the issue of school closure in Missoula. The Alternative Council of 1998 came forth with many suggested solutions as alternatives to closing neighborhood schools. Which of these proposed solutions do you favor?
Well, we looked at a lot of the different things that the Alternative to School Closure Committee brought forth, and I'm assuming that that is what this question is dealing with. Certainly, I support the idea of applying for grants, and I believe that Dr. McCain and Curriculum Committee is trying to do that to offset as many budget things as possible. We have explored the rental of facilities as much as we can and are continuing to try to lease some of our buildings such as Jefferson, but we have been unable to do that at this time. We have, the proposal was brought forth to seek legislative funding, and I believe that we have actively done that in this year. The proposal was brought forth to put in daycare services, and those are certainly in place in many of the schools around the district, if not all of the schools at this time, and also to solicit volunteers to work in the schools, and that is certainly happening in many or most of the schools now.
Thank you. Deborah Sears.
Well, having not been on the board last year, I don't have the alternatives that came in from this Alternative Committee, but I would say that I'm very in support of having principals that are able to work at two different schools, to have schools at number 200 children and then have a halftime principal rather than a principal at a school of 400. We could do this with Pax and Roosevelt. It would work quite well with modern technology and a fine administrative assistant. I would say that to acquire grants from the federal government, you need a very comprehensive plan that has extended components, and I wonder that if we put something like that together, we might receive more extensive generative federal grants. Thank you.
Gigi Wykes.
School closure is only an issue if you feel that it's necessary, and I've seen this board debating it for a majority of last year as a cost-saving measure. We need to cut money somehow, so we need to do this because we need to cut money. We need to save money, and we need to cut costs, and that reason seemed to evaporate when the funding improved, and in the reasoning then shifted to, well, now we need to level class size and make it more equitable for class size across the district, and that reason emerged as the reason for cutting schools. And that reasoning, I also do not think justifies school closure for the reasons I said in the last question, but I think all the Alternatives Committee's suggestions were good and should be considered, but in the broadest sense, I think the board is responsible for setting a policy and a commitment, and I would like to see this board make a commitment to not be considering school closure every year, but to think of other broader creative solutions to their problems with funding.
Jenda Cummings.
The board, over the past three years that I've been on the board, has looked at many, many alternatives and places to find money. We did look at many of the alternatives brought forward by the committee. We realized that selling our land would not help our general fund deficit because our general fund is capped and those funds cannot go into our general fund. The committee brought forth a proposal for halftime principals and halftime librarians. I do not support halftime principals and halftime librarians. I think they diminish the quality of education that our children get. Our children deserve full-time librarians and full-time principals. Principals do more than discipline children. They're instructional leaders for the building. They remove a great many burdens from teachers so that they're free to teach and meet our expectations.
Okay, the next question, we'll start with Deborah Sears. Have you had enough time to review the alternative budget? And if so, do you agree that there is room for both programs and keeping schools? And if so, do you agree that there is room for both programs and keeping schools open?
I have not been given the Alternative Budget. But yes, what I have seen of it in working with Suzette a bit here, I do feel convinced that there is money in this budget. If we set the priority for schools, neighborhood schools, if we set that as a priority, I feel we can have that. I do believe that administrative ease or efficiency does not need to be our main focus here. The health of our children, and I often have said and will continue to say that I feel that the health of my children depends on their beginnings and their beginnings are in their primary schools. And their primary schools need to be family-oriented. We don't need to take the parents out of the schools. I will continue to go to any school that my children are in, even if it's 10 miles away or 20.
Thank you. Gigi Weigs.
I've begun my study of the Alternative Budget last week and I am continuing to study it. Yes, I firmly believe that the programs and schools can be accountable, not only for the next year, but for the next three years. That's what that Alternative Budget was crafted for, is a three-year commitment to all our schools. There is an unknown cost to school closure and it continues to shift in our minds about what it would cost to close these two schools or the third one proposed. There's the cost of transportation, for which traffic studies are still not apparently available. There's the cost in the dislocating of teaching talent from schools. This week, our teachers are lining up to choose their new job assignments theoretically and that's going to affect far more than just these three schools, but all the schools in the district. There's the cost of dislocating children from their neighborhoods and having them bust across town. All those costs make me think that this Alternative Budget is a far better choice.
Thank you. Agenda Cummings.
I will show up my visual aid. This is the Alternative Budget. For those of you who haven't seen it, it is several pages, five, six, seven pages of columns of numbers. There is no English in here. To me, this is incomprehensible. I do not know what this means. I have read some of the letters to the editor that have talked about this budget and there are some significant problems. I mentioned before the 112 line items, that this seems to be based on the theory that all line items are not expended down to zero. And you've seen before that our building managers, our principals and program managers have budget authority to move money around within functions. So if you look at an isolated line item, you only see part of the story. Let's take an example, say Fine Arts, where a certain amount of money is given within instruction and you have, you can have this amount of money for staff development and a certain amount for instrument repair. That money is flu- I'm sorry, I'm out of time.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary Harrison.
I'm afraid I have to echo Agenda's comments about the budget being incomprehensible to those of us who have no narrative or no explanation. We have sat down with Bruce Moyer and I know he has talked to the person who helped Suzette come up with some of the numbers. We've tried to identify where these different things fall and how they relate to different items in the budget and how they carry through. We tried to figure out how this relates to the mission statement and where this will put the district. Because of course, always in a budget, you want to look at what is your ultimate end? What is it that you're hoping to accomplish in that year with the budget? And we've been unable to determine any of that information, so I'm afraid I can't speak very well to that.
Okay, thank you. The next question, we'll start with Gigi Weigs. Much has been said in the school debate about some Missoula schools being too large. When, in your opinion, is a school too large and why? And when, if ever, is a school too small?
I don't think any of the Missoula schools are too large. I also don't think that any of the schools are too small. I think that the small schools we have have been models and very effective at what they do. Emma Dickinson is a prime example. Roosevelt has many strengths that flow from its current size. Now, I don't think that that means that schools that are twice as big as Emma Dickinson or Roosevelt are necessarily better schools. They're effective at what they do. We have a variety of sizes across this district and I would like to preserve that diversity. We have an open-door policy for parents to be able to take their children where they feel it would be most effective for them to learn. If we create a situation in which all the schools are large in the sense of 500, 400 to 500 for Missoula, I think we're losing an important component of the district's current strengths.
Thank you. Agenda Cummings.
I also don't think we have any schools that are too large. And if we had the money, that we don't have any schools that are too small either. I have a child in one of those largest schools in the district. I have a first grader at Lewis and Clark School. I can tell you that there are many significant adults in my first grader's life that know his name. It is not a large anonymous place. It's a very warm home. I think that the larger schools do offer some benefits in that they have flexibility. If you only have one grade level, one class per grade level, you don't have a lot of flexibility in how you group children. You have more flexibility in grouping children and being able to find the right adult to meet their needs when you have more classes per grade level. You're also able to concentrate your resources and make your money go a little bit farther. So I don't think there is anything negative about our large schools.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary Harrison.
I would agree. I believe that we don't have large, the schools that are too large. I think most of the schools that we are looking at fall out to be about 350, which is right in the ballparks. It's still not stuffed to the gills. I believe that they are, allow us to get equitable class size across the district, which I believe, as a board member, you always have to look at, what is the best for every child in the district? And that is a concern for our board members, to make sure that class size, class availability, all these things are available to all children. We heard principals talk at one of our meetings about when a school does get too small and several of the points that Agenda brought up were brought up by those principals. They talked about the lack of flexibility in being able to have more than one classroom. There were at times that teachers would be able, well, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Deborah Sears.
Yes. I would go so far as to say that any school over 250 children is too large. There are studies that point to that. Personally, I've been enjoying listening to Rachel Valieux, our county superintendent, talk about the schools of rural Montana. And by the way, we are rural here in Missoula. I think it's very important to each community to have its own school and people will certainly fight for that in this state of Montana. I've recently come back from a semester in Wales where small village schools for five of my children were wonderful. The principals or headmasters or mistresses taught a class. Even in the high school of 1,200, which was taken from many tiny village schools, had a principal who taught a history class. Small schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll start the next question with Agenda Cummings. Would you agree to a policy saying no new schools would be built as long as Roosevelt and Dickinson are closed?
Oh, that's easy, absolutely. I think that the whole board agreed to that policy. There is no intention to build any new schools. We have these fine, fine schools, fine facilities. They're paid for and the taxpayers expect us to be fiscally responsible. If we get more children, and I hope we do, those schools will reopen and children will be bussed to those schools.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary Harrison.
Yes, as a matter of fact, this was brought up at a board meeting. I'm not sure whether it was the last board meeting or the meeting before and brought forward as something that the board was interested in saying publicly that we have no intention of building any new schools, although that has been a rumor that's been floated around town. And certainly, we all feel that if it would be available to reopen these schools, that's exactly what we would do.
Thank you. Deborah Sears.
I was quite active at Paxton during the time that Paxton was rebuilt and feel that it needed to be rebuilt, but it needed to be rebuilt at 250, not 450, so that it would fit the environment that it is in. As it stands, it has a substandard playground. I feel that Chief Charlo, with the numbers that they were given during the four years that the decision was made, could very easily have been built to accommodate 300 children rather than 600. If indeed Linda Vista needs a neighborhood school at some point, I would like to see a neighborhood school there. I believe in neighborhood schools. I believe that children need to walk to their schools. I don't want to see new schools built that take the middle of the city, the neighborhoods, out of their neighborhoods. I live in the middle of this town because I like walking. If I lived outside the town, I would be choosing busing.
Okay, thank you. Gigi Weigs.
I know that in public comment, the South Hills Alliance parents did voice their feelings that they did not approve of busing their children into the city to go to Emma Dickinson. One man was very eloquent about his memories of being a Cold Spring child busing into Emma Dickinson. So I think this is an issue that raises a lot of concern and passions even among the families outside of the school district, outside of the inner-city core. But I do think the board has a responsibility to make a commitment to the schools that are built right now and to work with the buildings we have. I think like Deborah, I would keep an open mind, but I would not be the first to wake up and want to build another building in this school district. We already have a very heavy tax burden on people for the Chief Charlo and Paxton and Prescott. I think I would not want to go that route first.
Okay, thank you. If we can start this one with Rosemary Harrison. How much curriculum review does the MCPS Board of Trustees engage in? Would you consider formally suggesting revisions not initiated by MCPS staff?
Yeah, we have an ongoing curriculum review of several different curriculums. Right now, we, well, we just implemented a new math curriculum. We have science and social studies. We have health enhancement. We have a regular program of curriculum review at all times happening and we're always looking for funds and considering funding for new curriculum packages and I think that's a very vital function of the school board. What was the second part of that?
Would you consider formally suggesting revisions not initiated by staff?
I think that as board members, we are certainly sensitive to different things that come up and I think that we, as board members, are always bringing things to the staff saying, I think this needs to be looked at, that needs to be looked at. And I think we have found them to be very sensitive to the issues that we have raised about lots of different curriculum issues.
Thank you. Deborah Sears.
Looking at curriculum is certainly something that needs doing at the high school level. We need a more flexible curriculum for children who need to have opportunity to do things that are different, that are outside the norm. Health enhancement, I am sure that we should have the sexuality curriculum in our schools. I wonder at whether it needs to come from outside our schools and I would like to have people teaching that curriculum that are comfortable with it. I'm very aware that there is a new math curriculum. It's so different from the curriculum we had before and there has been so little preparation for the teachers for this curriculum. It has been very difficult for them and I'm watching this in three different levels. I would say that science curriculum, we need to be careful that we choose something that we're able to train our teachers to teach. There's quite a bit out there.
Thank you. Gigi Weigs.
Would you repeat the question, please?
How much curriculum review does the Board of Trustees engage in? Would you consider formally suggesting revisions not initiated by staff?
Because I'm not a board member currently, that's one of the areas I'd have to learn. But I do know curriculum review from being a teacher and a professor at the university and I think that that issue of reviewing curriculum is one of those areas where communication between the staff and the board needs to be really enhanced and free-flowing at all times. The health enhancement curriculum that was proposed is also in the Alternatives Budget and I don't think there's an issue between these two proposed budgets about one funding staff development and one not. Staff development seems to be one of the unspoken issues here and I would support more collaboration and cooperation with the university and other resources in Missoula to try to work with staff to be able to provide the development they need for the curriculum that they teach.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Cummings.
I think this is an area where we're going to want to be very careful. The curriculum process, we review curriculums on a six-to-seven-year cycle. Currently, science is being reviewed. The curriculum director forms committees made up mainly of teachers. There's input from the University of Montana generally, from community, from administration. And in the past, the curriculum offices have very many, has have a succession of directors. We have a curriculum director now who has done an excellent job. And we've had teachers in the past in the district who have not trusted the curriculum process and they tried to go outside of that process and do an in-run to the board directly. We're hoping that all our teachers will trust in the process. We have an excellent curriculum director who's brought a lot of integrity to the process and he's made it quite clear if teachers disagree on a curriculum that they have the option to present a minority report to the board.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Deborah Sears. Monetary considerations have pitted class size against neighborhood schools in this election. Moving sixth-grade students to the feeder schools could alleviate all three problems. What do you think about moving sixth-grade students into K-5 neighborhood schools?
I was only just thinking about that. I have a fifth grader. I think it would be just wonderful to invite all sixth-grade teachers and all parents of sixth graders and fifth graders to a rally, a real party where we talk about who wants to do what here. Do we want to have our sixth graders with our primary schools? And I think we would find that many teachers would feel that that might not be such a bad move. I think it involves so many other aspects. How we work with our middle schools, how we team, how we work with our primary schools. But personally, I would rather see my sixth grader in the primary schools. And that's where I would be coming from.
Okay, thank you. Gigi Weigs.
A teacher told me recently that she does think there is a crucial stage of development in sixth grade that makes it of particular concern to parents and teachers deciding where to put those students. Particularly, there's a gender difference between boys and girls, as all of you know, at that age. And I think that's one of the options that we're probably going to have to look at in the next three to five years. About, Rosemary Harrison has even listed it as one of her concerns in the Missoula on Sunday, that reviewing middle schools. I would prefer not to address that as a problem-solving venture for the current debate. The current debate, to me, is a false choice. We never needed to close these schools and I would like to address that first and realize that we don't need to close schools and then begin the hard work of looking at the review of middle schools.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Cummings.
Middle schools are slated by the board to be examined next year. I hope that we do so to reaffirm our commitment to middle schools. And I agree with Gigi that this isn't a place to look for budget solutions. And I agree with Gigi that this isn't a place to look for budget solutions because it has, what I think would have a devastating impact on our middle schools. They're structured to meet academic, physical, and social emotional needs of the children of that age. It's the only place that our children get a full range of exploratories. They don't get them on a daily basis, K-5 or in high school. They make specific choices by the time they get to high school. This would be devastating to our exploratory program. You would not have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade band. The sixth graders wouldn't have their band program. They would have a second year of fifth grade band or a second year of fifth grade orchestra or choir, whatever their choice might be. They would not have a whole quarter of visual arts every day. They would still have it six or eight times a year. This, you know, we've spent significant amounts of money on staff development for middle, I'm sorry, I'm out of time.
Thank you. Rosemary Harrison.
I believe that middle schools are probably one of the least understood by people who have, don't have kids in middle school. And I can say that before my children went to middle school, I had a lot of anxiety about putting them in. I, I have had a wonderful experience with both of my kids at Washington Middle School and am very impressed with the teaming process and impressed with the things that are available to them, sixth through eighth grade. Because of this lack of understanding of the middle schools and because we as a board are concerned that we want to make sure that this is meeting the educational needs of the children, as Jenda said, we have set this as a priority in the next year to actually sit down and look in a very detailed way at the middle schools to see if they are meeting the needs academically that we have set forth. And so at this point, I would say that I would certainly not support putting sixth grade back into elementary level until we have done a thorough study and assessed if that's appropriate or not.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Gigi Wykes. And this might be the last question for the evening before we give you an opportunity to wrap up. In light of Missoula's growth management plan, which seeks to preserve the vitality of our neighborhoods for the future, what responsibility do you think the school board has to be consistent with this plan?
The school board's responsibilities are to the students, the children. And they live in families and those families live in neighborhoods. And earlier, Rosemary said that, you know, it's sometimes seems to be an opposition between university rental housing and homes and families. I can tell you, I teach at the university. And over 25% of our university students are non-traditional parents. And when they're living in the university district or the Roosevelt Neighborhood School District, those university students have children in the Missoula School District. And I feel that the vitality of that core that I showed you where all the school closures have occurred is really of concern to me. It's of a concern to me because it affects children in this school district.
Thank you. Jenda Cummings.
This was a very difficult issue for me. I remember when Mr. Torma, I think he's back there, when he came to speak to us one day. And I took to heart his comments because I, I do agree with where the city is going in the direction of growth management. But at the same time, I think the board is charged with providing the best quality education we can, and that's where we have to make our decision. My hope was that we could show some sensitivity to our community in the choice of schools. I had hoped that the choices would not be so black and white, that we could bend a little and not choose those city center schools. It was not the case. When you looked at the choice between Roosevelt and Russell School, all of the children at Roosevelt fit into Paxton. It's less disruptive for that neighborhood community. And I believe that the administration is going to announce tomorrow that Paxton, the students that are moving to Paxton will maintain Title I services. Sorry.
Thank you. Rosemary Harrison.
When it comes to the growth management issue, this is something that I have followed for a long time. My husband was on the city council for 12 years and very involved in the initial planning stages of the growth management plan. One thing that we need to understand is that there is not solid agreement between the city council or the county commissioners as to exactly what that plan is yet. And we as the school board are absolutely charged with meeting the needs of our children academically and socially and every other way before we're charged with the growth management plan. When that is solidly in place, when we understand exactly what is expected out of that plan, then the board can certainly and does already meet with the city council, find out different aspects of that plan. But I, again, would agree with Jenda that we have to continue looking to the needs of our children first.
Thank you. Deborah Sears.
I would say again, that quality education for children begins at home and begins in family oriented neighborhood schools. And I will continue to believe that. And I have such an experience with that, that I can just back it up. I would like also to say that I've enjoyed living in this town for 17, working on 18 years. And I've watched it grow, this, this village. And I know that the area along the McCormick Park and in this town has developed and is continuing to develop. The numbers are coming in for infill and sewers going in and people moving in. And I'm watching the Slant District become much more enlivened with young children. I'd like to see some demographic studies done, very recent demographic studies done, on how many little children are out there. I'd like to see other programs like CoTeach in our neighborhood schools. Special needs three-year-olds and four-year-olds classes in our neighborhood schools.
Okay, thank you very much. That will conclude our questioning for this evening. What I would like to do is offer each candidate now 90 seconds to wrap up any closing comments that they might have. We will, they will be timed and much like you have been during your comments in response to the questions this evening. So if we can start with Jenda Cummings, please.
School board races are for good reason, nonpartisan. What you have before you tonight are two incumbents seeking reelection, one of whom is a lifelong Democrat, we won't say which, and one, a lifelong Republican. We disagree on a lot of details, but on this fundamental issue of quality of education, we're of one mind. And I think that needs to be made very clear to voters. I think we all need more information on this alternative budget, too. I haven't really had enough time to talk about it. But I think it's based on some false assumptions, that those funds in the unexpended line items are not being used prudently. And I can assure you that they are being used prudently. And this alternative budget takes away any kind of flexibility that principals and program managers have to meet the needs of students. And our budgeting authority has been decentralized to the principal level because it's principals that know what the kids need most. They need to have that flexibility to move that money. If they need some more supplies in one building or staff development in another, those principals need the authority to do that. And they have that under the current budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenda. If we can move next then to Rosemary Harrison.
It states in the code of ethics for school trustees that a board member must always remember that his first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of each student attending public schools. As we can all appreciate, that's a broad and consuming task. It involves not only accountable and wise fiscal management, but also visionary leadership in the areas of academic standards, equity of educational opportunity across the district, safe and orderly learning environments, and developing positive district-wide morale. To be an effective board member, one must be willing to listen, to learn, and to lead. In my time on the board, I have developed a passion for Missoula County Public Schools, for its students and for its staff. I've learned much about the complexities of this district and continue to learn more each day. This board has thoroughly considered the decisions that have recently been made based on solid information from the administration, from the school closure committee, and from the public. I, as well as other members of the board, are ready to move forward towards stronger curriculum, studies of existing programs, and higher academic standards. The best quality education for each student in the, is, in the district is my goal and my long-range commitment. I'm looking to the future, the best curriculum, the best teachers, and the best administration because this will provide the best education.
Thank you, Rosemary. Next is Deborah Sears.
Thank you for hearing us tonight. As I sit here and realize what is just truly important in this community, more and more, I, I am convinced that we have to set a priority. And when we do that, when, when the board sets the priority for quality education in neighborhood schools with fine programming, and then that board directs the administration to come up with a plan that offers that, then I will feel satisfied. I am quite sure that much agonizing has been going on, and I am concerned with that because I think in the face of making even painful decisions, if we're making the right decision, we do not need to agonize. When people are making the right decision for their communities, they understand. We don't have so much adversity. I am so happy to be a resident in Missoula. This is a special community. I mean, I come from Atlanta, Georgia, and they just blew their public education away. They're working on re-establishing it. Forced busing. Sad inner city. And there is no reason to believe that Missoula is any different than many of these other cities across our United States.
Thank you, Deborah. Gigi Wykes.
Imagine if, excuse me, imagine if we had not wasted all the energy and time debating school closure versus Kian Arts this year. If we had waited to hear that we had more funding than we've ever had in the last decade from the state, as well as federal money to reduce class size, and that the only task before the board and the community was to decide how to spend this new money coming from the federal government to reduce class size, then we would have taken our existing schools and fed and enriched their programs. Instead, we have had to work through painful, costly, incredibly hurtful processes that I think are still dividing our communities and neighbors. There are still people not speaking to each other today. Now, this alternatives budget was put together very carefully since last September. And unfortunately, the superintendent photocopied a copy of the alternatives budget with the formatting off. So yes, all of the columns are mixed up. But when the formatting is correct, you can see that it's a list of the line items of the current budget. And it is comprehensible with a little work and time and energy. And I've been working to understand it. It's a meaningful and reasonable document that Bruce Moyer will be looking at this week. And I'm certainly hoping that whatever this board looks like in a week, that they consider this alternative budget. Because we have a lot of flexibility right now with all our schools, and we're going to lose it if we continue with the decision to school closure.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to thank all the candidates for their time tonight. And thank you to everybody for being here.
Would you like a mint?
Sure, I'll take a mint.
Thank you.
To bring a mint.